The City of Grand Forks, a proud home of the University of North Dakota, City Council meeting Tuesday, June 23, 2020. It's hereby called to order. Welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Doppler.
Here.
Weber. Mr. Weber. Mock.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Bean.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Before we get to action items, it's with sadness that I say that Alice Marie Fontaine passed away Saturday, June 20, 2020, at All True Hospital in Grand Forks at the age of 90. Alice was born on January 7, 1930, in Fordville, North Dakota. She graduated from Dolan High School in 1948 and started a 67-year career with the City of Grand Forks in May of 1949 as a police stenographer. Alice then had a series of secretarial roles from city manager to the auditor's office before becoming city clerk in 1980 until her retirement in March of 2017 at the age of 87. Alice was a kind and quiet and dedicated person. Public visitation will be Friday, June 26, 2020, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Amoson Funeral Home in Grand Forks. Ultimately, we thank Alice for her long tenure and dedication to this wonderful community, and our prayers are with her family. And for the first 12 years, I ended every meeting with, "We stand adjourned. Thank you, Alice." And so that's how we'll end tonight. So, 2.1.
Recognition of Councilmember Marshall.
Sandy Marshall. Will you join? Welcome, Mr. Weber. Will you join me at the podium?
Yes.
Come on up, Doug. This is where I want to thank you both because you sacrifice a lot to let her serve the community, so we really appreciate that. So what we have for you is a plaque. It says, "Sandy Marshall, appreciation of four years of dedicated service as a member of the Grand Forks City Council from 2016 to 2020." It doesn't nearly express our gratitude, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then we have a token for you, a bad man. We love the local art. And it says, "I heart GF," and we know you do, or you wouldn't let her serve in the council.
Thank you very much.
So now you have, you can both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mayor Brown. I have a few things that I just wanted to share tonight. As I entered City Hall tonight for the last time in this capacity, my heart filled with pride as I once again admired the whimsical painting by our local artist Jesse Thorson on the wall by the elevator depicting the representatives on this council. It's been a great council, and we have accomplished a tremendous amount over the last four years. I often think of how Mayor Brown has repeatedly complimented this council. It's been one of the best he's ever worked with. First, I want to thank you, Mayor Brown. You have put your heart and soul into doing what is best for the people of Grand Forks. You have led with vision and have brought Grand Forks light years ahead of the post-flood days to being and becoming a truly vibrant community. Grand Forks is better off for your dedicated work, and your accomplishments will live on. I also wanted to recognize and thank City Administrator Todd Veland for your superb leadership and guidance. You are competent, compassionate, and creative in finding solutions for the city. Your excellent team of department leaders make the job of the council easier by consistently bringing forward well-thought-out proposals that are sound and logical and yet remain open-minded to challenges from us, resulting in a better outcome each time. As I reflect back on my four-year term, there are many things that come to mind that make me particularly proud, and I'll list a few, excuse me, a few of those. This council passed the adoption, or adopted an inclusion resolution in December of 2017 confirming our intent to be guided by a set of values that respects and includes all people in Grand Forks as equal participants in the life of our community. The recognition by this council of the nonprofit business community as an equal partner at the table of decision-making has been very important to me and that these, and recognition that these businesses contribute significantly to our economic and social well-being as a community. The council understands that prevention and remediation services help strengthen our entire community. I'm proud of the addition of, to the budget this year, of a community service grant program designed to help support the service work of these nonprofits and their important work on behalf of people in need in our community. I would urge you to keep this as a continuous budget item in the next years, in the years to come. I'm proud of the wonderful accomplishments that have been made with our local public library. Well, a new building has been a long-range goal for a long time. There have been some very significant, real, tangible accomplishments made with approximately $1 million in upgrades to the existing building, and I'm proud to say that it's now finally ADA compliant and accessible. And beyond cosmetic upgrades with new paint, carpet, furniture, lighting, and electronic capabilities, the structural changes as well that are less visible. Another thing I'm proud of is the opioid and substance abuse task force that was created as a mayor's call to action, resulting in some amazing advances, not the least of which include the detox center, support to the la grave on first supportive housing, and a coordinated effort that has increased the availability of information, prevention, treatment resources, and supports for people who are struggling. The work plan was completed substantially and rightfully gave birth to the call to action two that digs deeper into the preventative aspects of substance abuse disorders underlying mental health issues prevalent within our society. We have seen great economic impact of strategies employed by this council to encourage more housing and business development throughout the community, both through infill and strategic expansion of our footprint. The City of Grand Forks has provided continued excellent services to our residents, and I'm proud of the responsible budgets we have passed that have, and the city's efficiency and the city's efficient spending practices, all done so without any increases to the city mill levy during this time. We have valued our wonderful city employees and recognize them with great benefits and compensation as well. And finally, I'm so proud of the transparency of our city government at every level. We take this seriously and have steadfastly encouraged and really listened to public input. People may not always be happy with our decisions, but I can safely say that they are made with the best interest of our city in mind. I want to say best wishes tonight to going forward to the new leadership coming in. There is a great legacy to continue building upon. You will have the support and wisdom of the incumbents who have done so much already for this community that sit on this council. In closing, I want to thank the voters of Ward Five for electing me four years ago to have this opportunity to serve. To be able to contribute as a public servant is truly an honor that I've not taken lightly. I appreciated the ability to represent you and have especially been enriched by the relationships developed with so many of you as we have worked together on so many different issues affecting everyday lives. I leave this work satisfied and ready to take the next step towards my retirement. Thank you.
You have to have a photo up here. And again, on behalf of the grateful community, thank you. So before we get to action, I have 2.2. I would like to recognize Howard Swanson, who has been my left-hand man, I guess, is what we would call that. But I truly appreciated your counsel and your calmness and your getting to the facts and helping us do what was right and consistent and best for our community. So Howard, would you like to have, make a few remarks?
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed you didn't comment on my sense of humor.
Or your ties. I did.
Thirty-six years ago, I was appointed to the city attorney's office. I was 12. Perhaps not. But in all seriousness, that was a career-defining moment to me. Mayor Bud Westman, some of you I'm sure don't know who that was, was the appointing authority. But I had a particular privilege of being mentored by two former city attorneys in our law firm, John Marshall, Jay Fiedler. Through their guidance, I was able to focus much my career on the practice of municipal law. I always had an intent to provide the mayor, council members, department heads, and employees with the information that they can make informed decisions. I generally was not a decision-maker. You were. I strongly emphasize efforts to undertake risk management, to reduce the opportunity for litigation. Some of you may have heard me use the phrase over and over, "Don't give them a cheap shot." And what I meant by that was make your decisions wisely and soundly based upon the policies that you wanted to implement in accordance with appropriate law. I've always attempted to perform my duties professionally and with great integrity. Municipal law is a complex area. It's full of constitutional law, property law. Virtually every course in law school is encompassing the practice of law in one form or another. And I believe I did reasonably well in that, but it was because of your leadership and your predecessors' leadership. I had the distinct privilege of representing Grand Forks on state matters, local matters, regional, and national. I think those services to those different entities have also benefited City Grand Forks. We received our returns. I had the privilege of serving under four different mayors, Mayor Westman, Mayor Michael Polovitz, Mayor Pat Owens, and Mayor Michael Brown. I can tell you that each one of them with their own personality. They had their own goals, their own ways of doing things, of things. And they had their own agendas. It was my role to adapt to what the mayor needed. It was my role to adapt to what the city council needed. I tried to count the number of council members that have served in my tenure. Remember that for the first number of years, it was a 14-member council. That turnover on that council was not unheard of. Finally, we reduced to a more manageable size of seven. I tried to identify department heads that I've had the privilege to work with, and that's hard to do too. But I can tell you this. I have sat through thousands of hours of city council meetings, committee meetings, and the like. I wasn't always paying attention. I'll tell you a brief story. In about 1987, the Twins had a fairly good team that year. The budget hearings at that time would last hours over a series of days. The city attorney didn't have a lot of role in the budget hearings. So I ran a set of earphones through my suit coat to my ear, listening to a Twins game. And wouldn't you know it about in the middle of the game when things got a little bit exciting, I'd get asked a question. I didn't know what the question was, but I had an answer for it. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve. It's been my pleasure. But I need to thank all of your predecessors as well. I need to thank my wife, my family. There were a lot of times I was with you, not with them, but that was my choice. Lastly, I want to thank citizens of Grand Forks. There's a hazard in being city attorney, and it is sometimes you can't sit on the fence. Sometimes you have to make a call, and invariably somebody is not particularly happy with that decision. But I own that. That was my role. That's what I performed. But nevertheless, I'm very proud of that opportunity, the services. I leave this position with great appreciation and great admiration. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Now it's 2.2.
Recognition of Mayor Brown.
I heard you wanted to play a video. Will.
We're waiting on the video.
It's very good. It's the end-all. The end-all, it's the gratification. Yes. Mayor, we have a plaque which certainly doesn't come from me and really doesn't come from any in particular person in this room, but comes from all of the citizens of Grand Forks. Says, "Presented to Mayor Michael Brown, we celebrate your exemplary dedication to the community of Grand Forks. Thank you for making a difference in our lives." And we actually mean this, we're not just saying it. "In recognition of 20 years of outstanding leadership as the longest-serving mayor for the City of Grand Forks from 2000 to 2020." Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think it's hard to express the words to say. And again, I feel a little bit awkward trying to speak for the entire community of Grand Forks, but I think heartfelt, the leadership that you played bringing us through the flood and then providing your vision over the last 20 years will make a lasting impact, has made an impact on Grand Forks, and will make a lasting impact on Grand Forks. And I see you when I drive around town. I see you in the things that you've done and the vision that you've had. I think there is no better compliment, though, for what you've done for our community than the love that you get from your own employees. It speaks volumes to how you've acted as a leader. You've been a true gentleman, and I know the people of Grand Forks very much appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now photo op.
Now photo op. Where's Greta? She's hiding. Here we are.
Thank you. Now I'll make my remarks.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Weber.
Would you like to hear from us first?
Certainly.
So you can have the last word.
I would like that. That would be wonderful.
Is that all right?
That'd be wonderful.
I apologize for breaking protocol here.
Please.
And this has all gone by rather quickly, so if I may, I want to take a moment for Ms. Marshall and for Mr. Swanson as well. First of all, if I may, start with Sandy. I remember, oh, it'd been maybe nine years ago, we sat in the chamber offices. We were part of a long series of listening sessions. The social workers and agency heads in the community were among the last to be brought in. We were appreciative that we were brought in and that we were asked, but we noted that we were last, and it felt like a bit of a second thought. At that time, a group of us got together, and I believe it was at that meeting where it was first decided that you should run for city council. At that time, you ran against a longstanding, shall we say, ferocious council member who ran a very strong campaign. And so that next spring, I came on the council for this first time, and I served that first four years without you. I wonder what else might have happened had we had that first four years as well. So thank you for your work on the library, on the opioid task force, the inclusion declaration, and the CSG grant. I will work to make sure that we keep that on the budget. Thank you for your work on that. Most importantly, thank you for your unflagging support of all the citizens in our community. And you know who I mean. And thank you for the new friends that you introduced me to. You're going to be missed. Thank you. But just here, on Monday nights, you'll be missed. We'll see you around the community, I have no doubt. Mr. Swanson, I've complained about you. I've complained about you at different times. I've appreciated you. I've frequently feared you. But I know without any hesitation that the intent that you expressed earlier was always how you served in your role. You exercised and delivered on that intent to give us good information, unbiased information, and always to tell us that the decisions were ours to make. By interactions with state government and state leaders, it's always been apparent that the city of Grand Forks has been incredibly fortunate to have you at the helm. It's easy to say that you are the best city attorney in the state of North Dakota. I don't know how far I could argue, but I'm sure you are among the best city attorneys in the country. The city has been fortunate, its taxpayers, all of our neighbors have been quietly, ably, professionally, and nobly served by your practice all these years. Thanks for what you've taught me, and please know that you will continue to be a character in my classroom as I try to teach young people about social policy and the workings of city government. Thank you, sir. Mayor Brown, my first two official acts with city government go back to 2012. One was support for your opponent that election. The other was to run for city council. It was about my second or third council meeting, you invited me down to your office. I didn't understand immediately that I was being taken to the woodshed, but it went very well. And we have had, I believe, we've had a very strong collaborative relationship ever since then. I now feel that my support for your opponent was my first major mistake in city politics. I hope that you don't feel that way about the voters' election of me as a council member. Over the years, I've had the honor of getting to serve with you and the privilege of enjoying many opportunities that you've allowed me to try to do what I see as a right for the whole city. Thank you for your support of the city's physical infrastructure and its social infrastructure. This has been an important part of your legacy. New Americans, UND students, and faculty, and workers. One of my proudest parts of serving has been the opportunity to stand beside you at multiple labor events and to have enjoyed the endorsement of labor, again, alongside you. The city's and the region's labor groups have endorsed you as long as I know. You should be very proud of that. It's well deserved. Thanks for your faith over the last few months, and thanks for your successful steering through the COVID shoals and protecting our city. As of today, there were no new cases in Grand Forks County, and we have enjoyed weeks now of very low infection rates. We're often compared to the city in the South. At present and under your leadership these last few months, the citizens of Grand Forks need to recognize how favorably we compare and how fortunate we have been. As Council President Sandy's already noted, you took us from surviving the flood to thriving these last two decades with a billion-dollar boom in the works. COVID has stalled that. I don't believe it has stopped that. That work will continue. Finally, small thing, a big thing. Thank you for your support of Glasshein Way. It's good and proper that we honor longstanding civil servants such as yourself and Elliot Glasshein. And so I look forward to supporting such a move, hopefully in the near future. Thank you, Mayor Brown.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Council Weber. Anyone else? Thank you. Mute. It's as bad as Zoom. Anything else? If not, I would like to thank my family for their sacrifice and their support over the last 20 years. And in my time here, I've met many leaders at Grand Forks Air Force Base, and all of their leadership styles are very different, all their leadership styles are very effective. My leadership style stems from confidence in empowering people and watching them blossom, and I share pride in what we accomplished together. I want to thank the city staff and department heads. We have over 400 years of experience, and why not utilize it? And my nurses, who supported me when I was a doctor at the hospital to let me continue to be the mayor. It's been an absolute joy to work with all of you. I leave proud of the many things we have accomplished together: the Flood Protection Project, the Greenway, mosquito control, Youth Commission, Young Professionals, Student Exchange Program, America's Promise. We were a six-time winner, and this is where Alma Powell's recognized the 100 best communities in the nation for young people, and we got it six times in a row. The Downtown Development Association, the Sister City Program, and a culture of collaboration that pervades our city. A lot of these things emphasize our youth and giving youth opportunities, and so I'm very proud of that. And this year, at the State of the City, we opened with a video that showed why this place, Grand Forks, is such a great community and why it's been such a privilege to be mayor for the past 20 years. I'd like to play it. John?
I want to tell you a story about this place in North Dakota. You see, this place is special. This is a great place to learn. Whether you are just finding your voice, or if you're getting ready to tackle the world head-on, this place will help you grow as a person. This place is the cutting edge of technology, even when that technology is always changing. This is why I love this place, because it's never content with just sitting still. This place, you know your neighbors for the rest of your life, and you help them when you can, because you know when you need help, they will be there for you. You can feel safe and protected, and when things aren't going your way, you're able to find ways to get back on your feet. This place, you can play outside year-round. It's just a matter of how many layers you're wearing. And when Mother Nature gets a little too aggressive, this place doesn't panic. They roll up their sleeves and get to work because they don't know any other way. As much as this place can teach you, it also is willing to listen to others, because in order to become a great place for all, you need to be willing to learn. This place is caring. This place is cutting-edge. This place is home. This place is Grand Forks.
Well, thank you. This place is special, and it's been the honor and the privilege of a lifetime to serve as mayor. So I want to say thank you again. And then we go to item three. Adjournment.
So Mayor, I want to be short and to the point, but I just want to make one comment about all three of you that have gotten up to speak today. First, starting out with Sandy Marshall, I really wanted to say my appreciation for the work you've done with the city, actually sharing this side of the podium up here, which is nice. But your biggest opportunity was to meet with you as you were working on the library and some of those library issues. So I really, really appreciate that. That sticks out. For Mr. Swanson, I guess I'd like to just make a comment about when I was City Engineer Public Works Director in the 97 flood, and we were in the midst of the flood fight trying to figure out what our next step should be. And one of them was we were short of clay, and I remember asking you, "Well, what can we do?" I knew the schoolyards were available if we could only get in there. And I still remember what you said, "Don't worry about it. We'll figure out how to address it afterwards," which was very helpful. And to Mayor Brown, I think I'm probably the only person here that worked for you as a city employee and also had the honor of working with you on the city council. And all of that was very much appreciated, and I thank you very much for all that you've done for us too. Thank you.
So next, we go to item three. Adjournment. Item 3.1.
3.1, adjourned, signed, aye.
I'll let Ms. Marshall make the motion. And as Sandy seconds, all the bayers say aye.
Aye.
You stand, adjourned, signed, aye. Thank you at office. Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks, home of the University of North Dakota. This is Grand Forks City Council's organizational meeting for Tuesday, June 23, 2020, under item one, administer oath of office.
Item 1.1.
Are you ready to get sworn in as mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It's been a long journey for you. You have a beautiful family, and I know that those youngsters are not that happy to be here, but they will understand the importance of this day, I promise you. I'm going to swear you in and give you the official oath as required to take office. Raise your right hand and state after me. I, Brandon Bochensky, do solemnly swear.
I, Brandon Bochensky, do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of North Dakota.
The Constitution of the state of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of mayor for the city of Grand Forks.
Of mayor for the city of Grand Forks.
For the term ending June 2024.
The term ending June 2024.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, Council President Sandy. Item 1.2, administer the oath of office to the council members.
My mic isn't working, so thank you.
Where's Mr. Kavami? Who else is getting sworn in? Mr. Weber? Mr. Vieng?
And Mr. Weigl is on the phone.
Mr. Weigl is on the phone. Hello, Mr. Weigl. How are you doing? Can you hear me?
Doing well, Your Honor. How are you?
Really well. Thank you very much.
This is the only time I...
For those of you that can be down front, please come forward.
Are we going all at once?
We're going to do it at one time, okay? I'll do that thing, I state my name. You're not supposed to say, "State your name." You're supposed to state your own name, okay? It's not like the movie, all right? Mr. Weigl, are you ready? I would like you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brandon...
I, Danny Weigl.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of North Dakota.
And the Constitution.
The Constitution of the state of North Dakota.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
For council member.
For council member.
For council member.
Of the city of Grand Forks, North Dakota.
Of the city of Grand Forks.
Of the city of Grand Forks, North Dakota.
For the term ending, is it June 24? Read.
Yes.
June 2024?
The term ending June 2024.
Yeah, for the term ending in June 2024. I'm sorry.
For the term ending June 2024.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God or under the pains and penalties of perjury.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
So we'll open that up to city council, who wishes to be recognized.
If I may.
Please proceed, Mr. Councilmember Weber.
I'd like to move to nominate Councilmember Dana Sandy to serve as president of the city council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Let the record show, Councilmember Brett Weber has motioned to select Dana Sandy as city council president and Jeannie Mock as second. Let's move the motion forward, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, congratulations, Mr. Dana Sandy.
Thank you, it's an honor.
Moving on to 3.2.
In 3.2, elect vice president of the city council.
Can I make the motion?
Yep, please, Mr. Councilmember.
I'd like to nominate Jeannie Mock as the Grand Forks City Council Vice President.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Councilmember, Council Vice President Vien has motioned and Dana Sandy, council president has seconded. Let's move to a vote.
Comments?
Any comments?
If I may.
Yes, please, yes.
I'd like to take a moment to recognize the service for, I don't know how many years now, six years of the outgoing council vice president, Ken Vien. I came on council at the same time as Mr. Vien. As has been noted earlier this evening, he has been serving the people of Grand Forks for decades in a number of capacities. And I don't know that people fully appreciate, we mention it from time to time up here, but the wealth of knowledge, experience, influence, and service that he has brought to the city all of these years. From his earliest service, working with our congressional delegation and surviving, helping the city survive the flood over the years, and most recently, the last eight years on city council, the new water treatment facility. Easily the largest infrastructure project this city has engaged for decades. Not only was that made possible, but the majority of the funding is, in many ways, a direct result of Ken's influence in Bismarck, his connections, his knowledge, his passion on behalf of the city. We will always be a city deeply affected by water issues, either too much water, or it may not seem like it, but it happens, not enough water, and we're lucky to have Mr. Vien on the council for another four years at least. So Ken, thank you for your service in the past and in the future. I'm ready to vote.
Any further discussion points? Should we take a vote on the motion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving forward to action item number 3.2.
And actually, I'm gonna, if that was 3.2, election of vice, elect the vice president, I'll move on to 3.3, appointment of city attorney and the memorandum of understanding regarding city attorney services.
It's the mayor's duty to appoint a city attorney. After weeks of due diligence, I've chosen to appoint Mr. Dan Gostad. I'd like a moment to read a little bit of his bio. Mr. Gostad was admitted to the bar of North Dakota in 1995. He's been admitted to practice in form of all North Dakota state courts, the United States Federal District Court for the District Court of North Dakota and the Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals. He is a member of the state bar of North Dakota. He received a bachelor of arts degree in accounting and graduated magna cum laude from the University of North Dakota in 1989. He's a certified public accountant. After graduating, he spent time working for KPMG down in Minneapolis, then decided to attend law school at the University of North Dakota, obtaining a Juris Doctorate with distinction in 1994 and was ranked number one in his graduating class. He was a member of the Order of Coif and on the North Dakota Law Review. He originally started his practice with Crowley Law Firm, now Crowley Fleck Law Firm in Billings, Montana. He returned to North Dakota to open his own practice in Grafton, North Dakota, shortly thereafter joining Pearson Christensen Law Firm as a partner in 1999, where he's been practicing ever since. His law practice is focused on defending public subdivisions and their employees in civil litigation matters that in both state and federal courts. He also represents several water resource districts in northeast North Dakota, as well as several individual businesses. Further, he has been appointed as special assistant attorney general to represent the state of North Dakota and its agencies in several matters, most recently representing North Dakota Department of Human Services and the North Dakota Industrial Commission to defend against challenges to constitutionality of provisions of the North Dakota Century Law. He also serves as an adjunct professor of law at the University of North Dakota School of Law, teaching a modern real estate course. His wife, Stacy, and him reside in Grand Forks and they have four grown children. Todd, did you have some more comments?
Mayor, thank you, Mayor Bochensky and members of city council. Mayor Bochensky asked me to discuss some points on the MOU and earlier today, we had a conversation with Council President Sandy too, so I'm just gonna hit some bullets regarding the MOU. The MOU is generally, follows the guidelines of the previous city attorney, Howard Swanson, and so if you look at the duties and it's formed in similar fashion to what we had previously with Howard Swanson. The term is, as of tonight, June 23rd, if you so approve, 2020, and ends on June 28th, 2022, so it's a two-year term. That would be the year or the date in 2022 is the last Tuesday of the month, and so that's why it's aligned that particular way. The contract or the MOU provides for it to be paid in arrears, so essentially, like a lot of bills, you work a month and then you get paid. That's a little bit different than the current city MOU where you get paid in advance, and I think this is probably even more appropriate, you work a month and then you get paid for your services. It also contains a city prosecutor as part of it, and that's very similar to what has occurred with the current MOU where the city attorney chooses the prosecutor as part of their team too, so that's in a similar form and fashion. There's been some discussions on, today is an end date, but city government is about continuity, so there's things that are ongoing from a legal perspective, and we anticipate working with Mayor Bochensky and Mr. Gostad with Mr. Swanson, so there's things that we have ongoing, whether it's work with the city of Grand Forks, with our jobs development authority, with the Alera Center, and we anticipate a smooth transition administratively working in tandem with Mr. Swanson as we move forward. Currently, we have an office in City Hall, in the older part of City Hall, with, has city attorney offices. I think Mr. Gostad is gonna be more housed with his team at the current, at the Pearson Christensen Law Firm, which is a block away from us here primarily, so we'll take a look at that office, we may be able to utilize that office as for, even for other city staffs, we're gonna work through that. Importantly, on the budget, the budget currently for 2020 is $288,750, and if you look at one of the appendices, the proposed budget is $257,850. It's, we're already six months into the year, and so you'd have to take half of that, so it is, if you look a year over, a calendar year, it's a savings of approximately $23,000 from the current MOU that we have. Generally, the savings are in the prosecutor, the attorney, retainer itself, and some miscellaneous fees, and I suspect Mr. Gostad is gonna use some of his office for some of those fees, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lower cost to the city of Grand Forks. If you wanna look at hourly rates, they're very similar, both for city prosecution and for city attorney, and I think Sherry Lundmark here, our city clerk, handed out a spreadsheet of where the costs are, so they're plus or minus about the same, and of course, the budget is lower. I have personally worked with Mr. Gostad, the city of Grand Forks, outside of our city attorney, Howard Swanson, sometimes we seek outside services to include with Pearson Christensen, so I have worked personally with Mr. Gostad, and I will, I can testify to his high professionalism, great work ethic, and great customer service, and I think you're gonna be pleased that he's your next city attorney. We had a conversation, Maureen and I, this afternoon with Mr. Gostad, just kinda going over what kind of work he has above and beyond his private service, and it's gonna be in a similar form and fashion to what we have with the Swanson workup. It's gonna contract a position, they're gonna carry on their private practice, but still perform services here with the city of Grand Forks, so in a very similar mode as I spoke of about the MOU. Pearson Christensen and Mr. Gostad, he's currently working for water districts in our region, he's working on behalf of City Laramore, and also importantly, just similar to Mr. Swanson, he's working on behalf of the North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund, that's our insurance carrier, and so when you're representing the Insurance Reserve Fund, you're working for municipalities like Grand Forks, you're working for counties, so Mr. Gostad is well aware of what cities have to go through because he has that broad experience in representing cities on behalf of the Insurance Reserve Fund. With that, Mayor Bochensky, that's kinda my overview, I would say there's good reason to move forward, we look forward to working with Mr. Gostad in many forms and fashion, and we have lots of work going on, and we've already started to invite him to meetings starting tomorrow, so with that, we'd recommend moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. As it's the mayor's duty to appoint a city attorney, it is the council's duty to confirm, so I'd like to open this up for discussion, or a motion to confirm Mr. Gostad and accept the terms set forth in the memorandum of understanding to provide city attorney services for the city of Grand Forks.
Mayor Bochensky.
Yep. Is that Danny?
Yep.
Councilmember Weigle's recognized.
Yep. I'm gonna make a motion to approve your appointment. I do however, think it's very important, Mr. Gostad has a ton of experience working with local government, but I also think it's very important that the prosecutor that he appoints is also a very important position, and I know Ms. Christie Pettit's currently in that position, she's a very well-respected attorney here in Grand Forks and throughout the state of North Dakota, and I think it's important that she has an opportunity to continue in that position due to her years of service and her experience that she has prosecuting crime throughout Grand Forks and beyond, so I'll make a motion and hope that we can sit down and discuss moving her forward as the city prosecutor as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Weigle, do we have a second? We'll do, Councilmember, Council President Dana Sandy, seconds. Let's move it to a vote, all in favor say aye. Do we have another comment?
Yes, please, if there's opportunity.
Yes, please.
Actually, I have a question for Mr. Gostad, if I may.
Sure.
Just to help me, you're not on the clock yet, but if I ask for some clarification, it's probably fairly straightforward, or maybe a little more complicated, but in the MOU, there is, there's a couple references to council's role in this. Specifically, the city attorney is appointed by the mayor with the approval of the council. I'm curious about what that means, that suggests some degree of tension rather than a rubber stamp, and similarly, in the next paragraph, it refers to, the foregoing appointment has been confirmed by the Grand Forks City Council. You were involved in the drafting of this MOU, I'm guessing, if you could just speak to those two points.
Yeah, and as I understand, the statute is, the mayor will make the recommendation to seek the appointment, and it does require consent, by statute requires the consent of the city council, so that's why that language is incorporated within the, within the MOU. With respect to, it's been approved, maybe I was a bit presumptuous in drafting it, and so we included that language in there in anticipation that we'd get that consent. So that's why that language should maybe appear in the agreement.
Okay, and the language that the council gives approval suggests that the council could opt to not give that approval as well.
They could.
Yes, very good, all right, that's the question I had, thank you.
Chair recognizes Council President Dana Sandy.
Yeah, I'd like to point out that city attorney Howard Swanson provided a vast capability that is going to be hard for anyone to replace, and I don't think, I don't necessarily think the city of Grand Forks needs to have, or have the expectations on you, Mr. Gostad, that you will step in and be Howard Swanson. I anticipate that you will set your own tone, you will provide and bring your own expertise, you'll give us an opportunity to learn from you, and we hope that you would learn from us as well. I for one, hope that you will understand, at least what I believe is the general consensus of the council, is we want a city attorney that's a team member. We want to partner in this because in all of the things that we deal with when it comes to matters of our citizens, there's a give and take. It's trying to find the balance between being the government that has to provide safety and security in water versus someone that also cares about the needs of the citizens who are coming to us with issues, and so my only expectation is that you're gonna be part of the team and will work with us rather than for us, and so I really look forward to working with you in the future.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment?
Mr. Gostad, go ahead.
Thank you. I've worked with Howard Swanson for, on a number of cases, and I have the utmost respect for Mr. Swanson, he did a wonderful job for your city, and I'm gonna tell you, tomorrow I'm not gonna be Howard Swanson, but I'm gonna work my darndest to get to the level of where you guys will understand, and I can provide you the guidance that you expect of a city attorney, and that I expect to provide to a city of this size and this magnitude. So I, like the mayor said, with respect to Mayor Brown, there are big shoes to fill, and I'm gonna work as hard as I can to get to the standard that you guys expect, all members of the council, the mayor expect me to perform. With respect to the service, I mentioned this to Mr. Phelan in the conversation today, is my expectation is that if you have a question, I want you to call me and ask me, or so that I can come down and speak to you. That's the way I treat every client, whether it's the supervisor of a township, or it's the president of the city council for the city of Grand Forks, I treat all my clients in the same level of respect, and I, and because I understand that sometimes people don't wanna talk to an attorney, they don't wanna pay for an attorney, and so I have to respond to them and get back to them as soon as I possibly can with sound advice, and that's what I intend to do, and that's the best I, I truly will do as best and work as hard as I can for the city of Grand Forks.
Thank you for your candor, Mr. Gostad. Mr. Sandy, did you have a...
Just one last comment, Mayor, thank you. And just to, so everyone understands my comfort level, I had a very nice conversation with city attorney Howard Swanson today, and he said very nice things about Mr. Gostad and his capabilities, and so it made me feel really confident that this is a good move for our city moving forward.
Yep, Councilmember Mock, please.
Just so that I'm clear, so Mr. Swanson came, and then in his stead, John Workup would come if he couldn't be here for a meeting, is this a similar arrangement where we would have you as our primary attorney, and then if you can't come, someone in your practice would?
Precisely.
With respect to the, uh, service, um, I mentioned this to, uh, Mr. Phelan in the conversation today, is, my expectation is that if you have a question, I want you to call me and ask me, um, or, so that I can come down and speak to you. That's the way I treat every client, whether it's the supervisor of a township, or it's the president of the city council for the city of Grand Forks, I treat all my clients in the same level of respect, and I, and, and because I understand that sometimes people don't wanna talk to an attorney, they don't wanna pay for an attorney, and so I have to respond to them, and, and get back to them as soon as I possibly can with, with sound advice, and that's, that's what I intend to do, and that's the, the best I, I truly, uh, will do as best and work as hard as I can for the city of Grand Forks.
Thank you for your candor, uh, Mr. Gostad. Mr. Sandy, did you have, uh?
Just one, one last comment, uh, Mayor, thank you, um, and just to, so everyone understands my comfort level, I had a very nice conversation with, uh, city attorney Howard Swanson today, and he said very nice things about Mr. Gostad and his capabilities, and so it made me feel really confident that, uh, this is a good move for our city moving forward.
Yep, councilmember Mock, please.
Um, just so that I'm clear, so, Mr. Swanson came, and then in his stead, John Workup would come if he couldn't be here for a meeting. Is this a similar arrangement, where we would have you as our primary attorney, and then if you can't come, someone in your practice would?
Precisely, um, it, uh, my partner Joe Quinn and I work very closely together, um, he's actually going to the city of Laramore tonight, uh, cause he, he does work for the city of Laramore, um, and that would be the, the expectation, is that he would work very closely with me, um, with respect to the, uh, the, what I call the civil work. In the city prosecution work, I, and I wanna address, uh, councilmember Weigle's, uh, comment too, is we are looking at having Mr. Quinn be the city prosecutor as well, uh, for this reason, is he does a lot of, he's, he's been appointed to what's called the CJA appointment, which is a federal appointment to defend, uh, in, in criminal cases in the federal court system, where those that can't afford to have an attorney, he'll come in and, and represent them. He's had a tremendous amount of, uh, uh, work in that area, so he knows the criminal law very, very well, much more than I do. Um, and we also intend to utilize an associate, Ella Bratton, also in that, in that regard, um, to provide, make sure that we cover that city prosecutorial duties, uh, and represent the city, so I have every confidence in Mr. Quinn's ability, in fact, he was a student of mine, uh, when I taught modern real estate, and I think he was the top student in my class, if my memory serves me, so I have a, an utmost respect for him, and, uh, he is gonna be trying a case in federal court in the middle of July, uh, uh, through the Insurance Reserve Fund, and he's gonna be handling that trial, and we've had a number of trials together, where he's, uh, sat in and been second chair for me.
Thank you, Mr. Gostad, do we have any more discussion? Mayor Butch. Uh, let's, uh, we'll recognize, uh, councilmember Weigle first.
Uh, Mr. Gostad, you just mentioned that you're looking at having somebody from your own firm handle the city prosec-, uh, city prosecution, um, so is, what you're telling me is that we, you aren't open to have Ms. Pettit as your prosecutor?
We had, we had, uh, when, when I was first approached about this possibility, we talked about, um, with the mayor about the, the, having two firms, uh, doing work for the city, and I, I thought it might be more, uh, logistically favorable to have it all within the same law firm, um, and, and so that's what we're, we're considering is, is having, uh, Mr. Quinn serve in that capacity, uh, to do the prosecutorial, uh, duties.
Are you open to discussion in the next couple days, so that we, um, I'd obviously like to sit down and discuss this a little further?
Aye.
Versus saying that, hey, this is said and done, and this way it's gonna be?
Certainly, uh, and, and anytime I'm available, anytime this week, uh, if you, we're gonna sit down and meet, I'd be more than happy to do so, with, uh, any member of the council as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Mock, did you have another?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to clarify one more time on the budget, that's, so that's the full amount for the 2020 year, so it would be half of that essentially from the remainder of the year.
Mayor Butchinsky and councilmember Mock, you are, you are correct, so it's, it's just trying to mirror what it is, so you kinda know what the overall, so we, we got six months left, um, so it's, it, uh, you know, it's been a lighter legal year on the prosecution side, so we'll see how the rest of the year carries out, but that is true.
Yeah, that's the yearly budget.
Mr. Butchinsky, I would suggest, Mr. Phelan, that we add the dates, start date and end date, because it is very ambiguous, although it's, because it says 2020. It doesn't say June 2020 to, or July 2020 to June 2021, or 2022.
Yeah, I think that would be a problem to add those dates before we sign it.
Not at all.
All right. Any other discussion items? Should we move forward with the, uh, Mr. Weigle, or can we move forward with the original motion, and councilmember Sandy's, uh, second? So move it to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think all we have left is adjournments, so.
We just need a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Kyle's gonna make his first motion. Councilmember Quamie, thank you, do we have a second? Councilmember Weber seconds. Put it to a vote, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Consider the council meeting adjourned.